Good evening. This ninety-second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, note that I will recognize you by saying you have the floor and then you may begin talking. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Pastor George Hopkins from Zewebo Community Church. Pastor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Let us pray. Lord, we ask that you would provide what is needed to lead our Baltimore City tonight and to lead our city in this moment of time. Lord, give us the strength to create a path forward when one is not found. Give us the courage to face obstacles that must be resolved. Give us the empathy to serve the interests of every citizen in this wonderful city. Give us clear sight, Lord, to see the moment fully as it is and also give us vision to see what we can become. Give us the perseverance required so that that vision may become our reality and give us the confidence that we are here for the purpose to lead in a time such as this. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Pastor. Tonight's Showcase Baltimore will be delivered by Candace Maria with the A May Project. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you and good evening. My name is Candace Marcia Everett and I am the founder of A May Project. I thank you to Brandon Scott and Baltimore City Council for having me here tonight. I'm going to share a brief PowerPoint and ask just for your attention briefly. And we're going to begin here. So again, my name is Candace Marcia Everett, founder of A May Project. We are a youth-based creative and performance art agency here in Baltimore City. A May Project is committed to artistically support children as they navigate intersectionality and utilize creative tools as catalysts for helping social emotional development, positive interpersonal relationships, critical thinking, communication, performance readiness, and ultimately, social change. According to Americans for the Arts, children who are considered of low socioeconomic status with high participation in the arts have a dropout rate of four percent compared to a twenty-two percent dropout rate of their peers of low socioeconomic status and low participation in the arts. A May Project sessions include twelve-week cohorts of children in which they're challenged to reconsider personal and civic responsibilities through theater-based exercises. At the end of the cohort, each ensemble performs in front of live audiences. Obviously, COVID disrupted our normal process, but we found a way to artistically advocate for racial justice following the murder of George Floyd. Stand Now, A May Project's first digital media production was created by only two of our veteran youth performers who happen to be my sons, thirteen-year-old Caleb and eight-year-old Rashad. We kicked off the Stand Now Challenge on TikTok and we're actually in production for Stand Now, the Youth Musical, an initiative to diversify audiences and create measurable plans of action to solve racially motivated disparities with accessible professional arts experiences for youth in Baltimore City. Recently, Stand Now was used as a teaching aid for staff and board members at the Baltimore Montessori Public Charter School Equity Training during professional development. Our mailing list is up. You can subscribe to our YouTube channel and follow us on social media platforms at A May Project to stay in the know of all of our caring initiatives. And I ask that you consider tonight, art and activism to be the new form of protest and advocacy and learn how you can support this generation through innovation as they transition into the new leaders of our world. I'll end my presentation here with Stand Now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your great work, especially in the young people, for always uplifting them and keeping them in a place of high stairs, but also knowing what the greatness that they can achieve. A roll call, the clip will now call the roll call.
President Scott.
Present.
Councilman Cohen.
Present.
Do you want to pray?
Here.
Dorsey.
Here.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
Vice President Middleton.
Here.
Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Burnett.
Present.
Councilman Reisiger.
Here.
Councilman Bullock.
Present.
Councilman Reisiger, we have you here. Councilman Costello.
Present.
Councilman Stokes.
Present.
Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. A bill signed by the mayor, I mean, sorry, we will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the September twenty-first, twenty-twenty proceedings on the councilman's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found in pages two and three of your agenda executive nominations.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-zero, Diane Blevins, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Three.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-one, Janice Jackson, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Four.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-two, Jenny Penn-Diaz-Hayes, Ph.D. and PH., member, Commission on Aging and Retirement Education.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-three, Victor D. Smith, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Nine.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-four, Michael Trent-Tedu, member, Commission on Disabilities, District One.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA twenty-dash-zero-two-eight-five, Arnold Williams, member, Board of Finance.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Deals to be introduced.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-four, Baltimore City Critical Area Management Program, conforming certain provisions to these state mandates for the purpose of amending in accord with a recent mandate of the Critical Area Commission, the definitions of buffer and critical area, and the provisions governing designation of the critical area and providing for special effective dates. Sponsored, Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-five, landlord tenant right to counsel in eviction cases for the purpose of establishing a mechanism to provide to counsel for individuals in certain matters involving eviction, providing that the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development oversee the provision of counsel for individuals in certain matters involving eviction in Baltimore City, setting forth certain additional duties of the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission, providing for an additional member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission as permitted by the city charter, defining certain terms, requiring an annual report to the mayor and city council regarding certain metrics, providing for the separability of certain provisions, requiring licensed landlords to disclose to their tenants certain information regarding the right to counsel in eviction matters. Sponsored, Council President, Clark, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey.
Please add Councilman Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Reisiger, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors. Thank you. Thank you all for co-sponsoring this piece of legislation. We all know that COVID- nineteen continues to have a major impact on our communities. We know that Baltimore needs support now more than ever. We have to take action to provide relief and support to our residents as soon as possible. This legislation will provide counsel for tenants in certain matters involving eviction. We know that COVID- nineteen has exacerbated and shown many things that we knew existed already or problems that we knew existed already and the need for us to really dig in deep to tackle them. Housing stability is one of them. This will improve the ability for residents to achieve favorable outcomes in landlord tenant disputes. We know that when people show up to corporate representation, they achieve outcomes that are more fair and more equitable. This is an improving cost-effective way to support people who are in the city of Baltimore and prevent evictions that we know are traumatizing and destabilizing for our families. I look forward to a wonderful hearing on this piece of legislation as we move through the process, and this has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
Excuse me, Mr. President, can you stop?
Oh, yes. Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-six, Water Accountability and Equity Act Modifications, for the purpose of clarifying tenants' access to programs at the Department of Public Works, protecting against conflicts of interest by employees at the Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals, and by hearing officers and their overseers at the Environmental Review Board, improving and specifying data collection metrics by the Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals, clarifying a customer's right to dispute determinations by the Department of Public Works before the Department, the Office, or the ECB, deleting the Director of Public Works or the Director's Designee from the list of members of the Committee for Office Oversight and replacing that member with the mayor or the mayor's designee, modifying the effective date of the Water Accountability and Equity Act as enacted by Ordinance Twenty-dash-three-three-six and modified in part by this ordinance mandating the publication of public comment of all proposed new or amended rules and regulations governing the operations of the Office of Customer Advocacy or ECB hearings or restricting the rights granted customers under the Water Accountability and Equity Act and this ordinance suspending water service cutoffs and the imposition of service restoration fees until the Water Accountability and Equity Act as amended by this ordinance is fully effective, correcting and clarifying related provisions and providing for special effective dates for certain provisions and activities. Sponsors, President Scott, Clark, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey, Burnett, Snead.
Please add the Council Vice President, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Reisiger as co-sponsors. Did I miss anyone? Thank you, everyone, for your sponsorship. This piece of legislation, we know here that the Water Accountability Act is a critical law that was separated from this council and separated this council by Council Vice President Middleton, who made sure that DPW and all the agencies came to participate in a verbal process. This bill modifies the implementation timeline of which is now law. Water billing has continued to be an ongoing issue, as we all know very well. Water bills went up ten percent on October the first, and it's an issue that all of us in the councils, an extreme amount of punishment. We know, again, that access to clean water, affordable water is important, and more so now as we continue to face this public health pandemic with the original bill implementation being delayed by mayor or executive order. This bill offers immediate relief for those dealing with billing issues. It also amends the original law and includes a new timetable for implementation so that we can implement as many portions of the Water Accountability and Equity Act for July one, twenty-twenty-one, as we begin. This legislation is about how we can build a better city government and investment programs and services that actually save the money over time while providing better service to our citizens. It's our responsibility to ensure that Baltimoreans have the tools they need to thrive, especially during these unprecedented times and beyond. I want to thank the Baltimore Right to Water Coalition for their continued advocacy and support in these efforts and all of my council colleagues as well. I look forward to discussing this piece of legislation as we move through the legislative process. This bill has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, real quick, I'm having some issues. Can I be on as a co-sponsor also?
Yes, sir. Please add Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-seven, Baltimore City Fire Department Reporting Requirements, for the purpose of requiring the fire chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department to report annually certain information to the mayor and city council of Baltimore and requiring the report to be made available on the department's website. Sponsors, Snead, Burnett, Clark, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey.
Please add Council President, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Cohen as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, colleagues, for your.
Sorry, Councilwoman, Councilman Stokes as a co-sponsor. Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, colleagues, for co-sponsoring this bill. This actually came about after getting a number of phone calls, just asking. I had more questions. We had more questions, so we decided to have a hearing. And we've had these hearings over the last year, and we basically focused on promotions, recruitment, and hiring and the staff and demographics within the department. And what we were able to learn is that there were many gaps that still exist in the fire department. I know most people know that a lot of people who work in the fire department worked there because their father had worked there, and that led to a kind of a white male makeup of the fire department. But since then, what we want to do is make sure that we concentrate it on local hiring and that we have the ability, the people that are within the department, no matter what color, race, or creed they are, what gender they are, that they have the ability to actually move up within the department. And so I just thought it, we thought it was important to have a regular update, a yearly update of some of these steps and to make sure that we're growing the department in the right direction. And so, thank you all for your support, and hopefully we'll get more co-sponsors and hopefully this is a bill that everyone can get behind. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-eight, City Property, Naming a Pavilion and a Nature Park in the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be the BGE Pavilion and the BGE Nature Park. For the purpose of naming a pavilion in the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be located at the coordinates of those coordinates as listed, the BGE Pavilion and naming a nature park in the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be located at the coordinates listed, the BGE Nature Park. Sponsor, Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, this is a renaming bill for a small portion of what is existing Rasch Field. I'm introducing this on behalf of Waterfront Partnership to recognize BG's contributions to this project. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-six-two-nine, Prevailing Wage Determination, for the purpose of simplifying the manner by which the city determines its prevailing wage for construction contracts by indexing with the prevailing hour wage established under state law for state-financed construction work performed in the city and providing for a rate review procedure after the initial rate established. Sponsors, Henry, Clark, Bullock, Dorsey, Burnett, Snead.
Please add Council Vice President as a co-sponsor. Council President is a co-sponsor. Councilman Reisiger is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry. One second, Councilman Henry, make sure we didn't miss anybody else. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd be happy to wait another moment if it'll get us another co-sponsor. I wanted to thank the co-sponsors that I have. Mr. President, by law, the city sets prevailing wage rates for all city-funded construction projects over five thousand dollars. Each year, the Wage Commission conducts extensive surveys to determine the prevailing wages to be paid on city contracts and then makes its recommendation to the Board of Estimates. Weekly payrolls are submitted to the agency, checked, verified by field interviews, and then penalties are assessed for late submission of payrolls for paying below the contract rate for specific trades such as carpenter, electrician, ironworker, et cetera, not maintaining proper ratios of apprentices, tattletorymen. These are, we get into the enforcement side of prevailing wage, and what we find is that the city does not always have the resources allocated to that that we would like. And so what this law would do is, rather than us paying to, using city resources to do our own annual survey, what we would do is, we would use the same rates that the state uses when the state does its annual survey for Maryland's prevailing wage program. Other counties already use the state's rate. Earlier today, county executive, former county executive John Woszewski announced that he would be introducing legislation that would use the state's prevailing wage for Baltimore County, I understand, and Arundel County is also moving in this direction. Mr. President, if we do this, not only would we create a level playing field across the metropolitan area, but we'd also be able to redirect the resources we spend now doing these surveys into doing enforcement and making sure that employers are actually paying workers the prevailing wage they deserve. I look forward to a timely hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Please add Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor. Well, Chair recognizes Council President, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank Councilman Henry for putting in this bill. I kind of had flashbacks when I served as Director of the State's Apprenticeship System, which also chaired the Apprenticeship Board, and we always had problems with Baltimore City, and it was always problems with people not following the Davis-Bacon Act and those prevailing wage laws, and the city had a serious problem with that. So this is just right on target, and I think it's going to be powerful as we move along with construction in our city. Thank you, Mr. Bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution Twenty-dash-zero-two-five-one-R, Save the United States Postal Service, for the purpose of calling on our U.S. Senators and congressional representatives to continue supporting the emergency appropriation of funds to sustain the United States Postal Service and to ensure the Postal Service continues to function as a universal public service. Sponsors, President Scott, Clark, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey, Burnett.
Please add Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Reisiger as co-sponsors. Thank you all. Councilwoman Snead, sorry, Councilwoman Snead as a co-sponsor. Nearly a half million postal workers are in extreme difficult times being impacted by the public health crisis, and not only are postal workers on the front lines in Baltimore fighting for their lives in this pandemic, they're also fighting to protect the nation's universal mail service. This resolution will call on our U.S. Senators and congressional representatives to continue, as they've had in a very great fashion, by the way, supporting the emergency appropriation of funds to sustain the United States Postal Service. It is critical that USPS receives as much funding needed during this emergency and forming these emergency appropriations to fulfill an even more critical mission today. While everyone's focus is about how this will impact elections, this is not just about the election. This is about the fabric of American democracy. This is about how folks are going to go on with their everyday lives, especially when you're in a global health pandemic and you know face-to-face interaction is a lot less. Protecting the postal service is the right thing to do, and I'm glad to have the support of my colleagues for this resolution tonight. Without objection, I mean, I'm sorry, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the appropriate rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisiger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Stokes. I didn't hear you, Councilman. Give me a thumbs up.
Yes, yes.
Got you now. That's a yes. Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. The odds have it, the motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty-dash-zero-two-five-two-R, Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD-Seven License to a Class A-Seven License, Twenty-seven Thirty-three Pennsylvania Avenue. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcohol and Beverage Subsection Twelve-dash-nine-oh-two-point-one-B-one, to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD-Seven Beer, Wine, and Liquor License issued for use at Twenty-seven Thirty-three Pennsylvania Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, two-one-two-one-seven, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD-Seven Beer, Wine, and Liquor Licenses for a Class A-Seven Beer, Wine, and Liquor License. Sponsor, Pinkett.
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett. Thank you, Councilman. This has been assigned to the Housing, Urban, and Affairs Committee.
Month, for the purpose of recognizing October as anti-bullying month and calling on all schools and organizations dealing with youth in Baltimore to do their part to bring awareness to the bullying crisis and work to end bullying. Sponsors, Schleifer, Clark, Henry, Bullock, Burnett.
Please add the Council President, Councilman Pinkett, Council Vice President as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen the co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my co-sponsors. As we've done every single year since this term has started, we've joined many groups across the country in recognizing October as anti-bullying month, and what we've done in previous years when we were in person is gone into schools and had different educational programs recognizing what bullying is, how to prevent it, how to speak out against it, and just overall trying to encourage people to be a friend and not a bully. And so that is something that I take pride in continuing year over year, and hopefully when we get back in person, we can renew and continue those efforts. So thank you, everybody, for your co-sponsorships.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer, do you want to move to suspend the rule?
Yeah, I'd like to move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Pass.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Reisiger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello. Thumbs up means yes. Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
President, fourteen questions, one pass.
Thank you. The odds have it, the motion is approved. The resolution has been adopted. The consent calendar can be found in Section Eight of the Agenda. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to read short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. We will now move to bills on second read, I mean, now move to, yeah, fifth and second read, committee reports, budget and appropriations. Chair rec, oh, go ahead, sorry, Dave.
City Council Bill Twenty-dash-zero-five-nine-six, Supplementary Rep... City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine six, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of General Services, two point five million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
May, uh, would you permit me to speak about all five bills, uh, prior to moving?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, these five bills are something that the council deals with on an annual basis. These are essentially closeout actions for the previous fiscal year. Uh, as you will see, there are four supplementary appropriations, uh, as well as, uh, a supplementary transfer. Um, so again, these are, these are pretty standard. We deal with these every year. This is essentially for funds that the administration has expended, um, throughout the year, uh, that they have not yet received, uh, authorization from the council for. Uh, Mr. President, hearings on each of these five bills, uh, move the subject bill.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. This motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine seven, supplementary general fund appropriating, excuse me, operating appropriation, fire department, eleven million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine eight, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, health department, five point five million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of moving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine nine, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, six million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved, I moved the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero zero, general fund operating appropriation transfer, Department of Transportation Service six ninety to Police Department Service six twenty-two, two million dollars.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on this bill, I want to note that under your leadership, Mr. President, uh, over the past two or three years, uh, even prior to when you were president, we were holding, uh, monthly, um, uh, oversight hearings of our police department, uh, both in the Budget Appropriations Committee to look at, uh, their finances, uh, the expense which they're reining in their overtime, and then in the Public Safety Committee, which you chaired formerly and now Councilman Schleifer does. Uh, we continue to have those oversight hearings. I think it's very important to note, uh, that, uh, the police department was scheduled to come in, uh, under budget this year, and the only reason that we're dealing with this two million dollars overtime is due to impacts related to two things. One, COVID nineteen, uh, uh, the, uh, protests, uh, that, uh, occurred in the city on the wake of George Floyd's murder. Um, so I think it's important to note that those are issues that, uh, police departments all across the country were dealing with in response to COVID nineteen, enforcement of restrictions, as well as dealing with the protests that not only impacted Baltimore City, but, uh, impacted all major cities across our nation. Um, so I, I must say that, you know, we've made a lot of progress on that front. We still have more work to do in terms of reining in, uh, the amount of overtime that BPD spends, but it is worth noting that, uh, they were scheduled to come in under their budget for overtime this past fiscal year. Uh, with that, Mr. President, uh, I move the bill favorably.
Mr. President.
Before you do that, uh, start, uh, Councilman Costello, we have some folks with their hands up, and before we, Councilman Dorsey, I'm going to come to you in a second, I just want to, as I said at the lunch, uh, highlight, uh, exactly what the Councilman just said, and I think that many of us know over the years, uh, the Councilman, as he's chaired the Budget Committee, and I had not always seen eye to eye on this particular issue, uh, but in this case we do. Uh, for, for us to understand that we have and we still have a very long way to go as we, uh, not just about the accountability for BPD's budget, but also about how we're reimagining public safety, also about how we're investing in agencies from transportation to help, uh, to our food system to make sure that we are having the impact that we need across our city agencies. But we also have a responsibility to pass a balanced budget, and I think it's very critical for us to, to highlight the fact that for the first time, as long as I've been in City Hall, were it not for these two unforeseen circumstances, BPD would not have been coming back to this council for supplemental, which is something that we should recognize, even as we're going to push, uh, forward to having a more accountable, as, uh, Council Member Henry, uh, highlighted earlier. And we will also make sure, uh, moving forward into the next administration, that, uh, money is not going to be spent before, uh, it should be approved by this body and following due process as well. Uh, thank you, thank you for that, Councilman Costello. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, despite all that's been said about this, I just, I can't, I cannot not protest this, um, this bill. First of all, it is unlike all of the other appropriation bills before the council that have just been voted on. None of the other bills is a transfer from one agency to another. It's also different in that none of the other bills appropriate to an agency that commonly, commonly, despite the fact that BPD may have been on target to not exceed for the first time in a long time, it is the, it is the rule, not the exception, that BPD writes their own ticket, that they commonly exceed wh- the money that has been allocated to them, and they do so, uh, without any prior approval. There's no other agency that commonly does that. Um, DOT, at the same time, um, has a structural deficit of two and a half million dollars in their capital budget this year. It's also the case that transportation is one of the deepest divides that we face as a city, and this money is directly coming from modes of transportation that would support those who are most disinvested in the city, those who do not own and operate, have access regularly to vehicles of their own. Sustainable transportation modes provide for those who do not have the luxury of owning an automobile, um, and, and that's exactly where this money is coming from. That's exactly who this money is coming from and going right to BPD, um, for, for what? For them to stand in front of buildings, uh, uh, you know, basically stonewalling people who are demonstrating their First Amendment rights, uh, out in the streets, um, in response to the same kind of disinvestment that, uh, goes hand in hand with the lack of transportation oppo- opportunity that exists in this city. Um, i- i- it's the same system of disinvestment, um, the system of oppression that, um, that leads to, uh, the death of George F- George Floyd and others. And, um, I just, I just think this is, could not be more, uh, the dead wrong message to take this money from where it is so sorely needed and put it to where the most money is already going. Uh, i- if we were talking about money being transferred from DOT to any of the other, uh, agencies for which we have just approved supplemental appropriations, I might feel differently about it. Um, but, um, the fact that, uh, that this money is coming from DOT directly to BPD, it just is, uh, and that it's the only one that is a transfer from one agency to another makes this distinctly different from all those other bills, and, and that's why I'm going to be voting no, and I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Thank you, uh, Councilman. I would just like to, I know this is a very unique situation where you and I actually did disagree on something BPD-related, but I just want to also just remind our colleagues that this is a unique one. The rest of them are cooldowns from the rainy, rainy day fund in which, uh, every single cent that we put, we took out, we will have to put back over the next two years as well, so we have to be mindful of that. Councilman Costello, outside here. You're on mute, Councilman. You're good now. Oh, now you're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, expand on your comments related to this. Um, and I can recognize that this isn't necessarily popular, but it's absolutely necessary. We are required, um, after the budget. This is money that was already spent. You know, if the two million dollars, um, had come from the rainy day fund and this two million dollar transfer was associated with one of the other four agencies that overspent, I mean, the, the, the worst that I can say here is that this is probably bad optics in the way that the five were structured, but either way, at the end of the day, we have to go through this accounting exercise. We are required by law to do that. So, Mr. President, uh, if there's no other comments, I move the bill favorably and I request a roll call vote.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Uh, we will, uh, as we move forward, invest more in our other agencies, and we definitely will hold BPD more accountable. We know that transportation is the issue here in our city. We're going to have to do tough work, work for our region and other folks to, uh, change the way transportation has been disinvested in, in many areas in our city has been disinvested in. But, uh, we also have to acknowledge the progress that's been made and the things that are necessary for us to do as a body, yes.
Councilman Cohen.
No.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Mr. President, I know I've already spoken on this, but I'm going to put one more fine point on this. This two million dollars all coming from one agency, it would not be so offensive even if part of it were coming from another agency. But the fact is, is that two million dollars from DOT could be leveraged to become ten million dollars. There, we commonly apply for and receive funding from the federal government through the state government for transportation projects that is a four-time match. This two million dollars turned into ten million dollars could build out the entire bike lane network of the city. It could, it could build out a trail network, it could baint miles of dedicated bus lanes to serve people all around the city. It, as businesses are struggling and we look at how we could help those businesses to survive through COVID, and particularly as we come into the winter and look at how they can serve their customers outdoors, this money could go a long way to making that possible for small business opportunity, for small businesses in this city. I just cannot object to this strongly enough, no.
Councilman Henry.
Uh, I'd like to explain my vote. Um, I appreciate the concerns that, uh, Councilman Dorsey has put forth, uh, in terms of, uh, whether there is a better way to spend the two million dollars that is being transferred out of transportation. I appreciate, uh, the...
Councilman Henry, we can't hear you.
Reality is, it doesn't...
Now you're back.
Say I'm muted.
No, you're back now.
Okay.
You faded. It was your internet. You're good.
Okay. Um, I, I appreciate the fact that, uh, there are people who are very upset that, and we are spending it on a police department that we already tried to budget not four months ago.
We, we keep, you're going in and out, uh, Councilman, you're, yeah, you're cutting in and out. I don't want to cut you short, but, uh, you're going in and out.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that. Um, Mr. President, can I explain at lunch today? Uh, I'm voting yes on this bill because at the end of the day, this is not a policy decision on how we should be spending our money. This is the final step in an accounting procedure, and the problem that needs to be corrected is that agencies shouldn't be able to spend money at...
Love to again, Councilman, but we're going to take your, your yes vote.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, before we go, Councilman Schleifer, if we, uh, he's muted now. Councilman, go ahead.
Is he good? Uh, I'm a yes, thank you.
Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett.
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. Um, I, I, I first I want to, um, thank, uh, Chairman Costello and, um, you, Council President, for the work that we've done over the past few years to rein in, um, a police department that, um, had been using almost, apparently, at least to us, supplemental almost as a, a personal slush fund, um, you know, without the type of oversight that anyone would expect. Um, and I, I believe that this situation is different, um, in that, and I, and I would hope that we would have resources allocated to all of the activities that Councilman Dorsey, um, just mentioned, but, um, these aren't the sources. Um, this, these funds wouldn't even be available to those activities. And so, um, I, not that we are rewarding the police department necessarily, uh, for their, um, accountability as it relates to the resources, but this isn't, um, as, um, Councilman Henry said, this is a required action so that we can make certain that we're accountable for the resources that we hold, store, ship over. So, uh, my vote is yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
I'd like to briefly explain my vote. Um, it's understanding that, um, this is also, uh, resulting from a cost savings with, uh, targeted transportation in terms of reduced usage. So again, I'm voting yes, and I do understand the concerns raised by Councilman Dorsey, and I appreciate those, uh, but again, also thinking about the other comments that are made in terms of, uh, rightsizing the police department in terms of their duty of overtime, so yes, I'm voting yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. Um, I want to expand on what our colleague, Councilman Bullock, just said. Um, this isn't money that, um, we are taking away from the agency. This is money that they did not spend. Uh, we've seen a number of improvements at our Department of Transportation, specifically on that sustainable, uh, transportation piece with, you know, increased focus and, and effort from Director Sharkey and his team. So we are not, we are not punishing them or taking away from them. This is money that they were overbudgeted, and they didn't spend, and they came in under their number, uh, and that's a good thing, and we want to see agencies, uh, continue to do that. So, I vote yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilman Stokes.
Well, Mr. President, I'd like to explain, I'd like to explain my vote. Um, I think everybody's, um, point is legitimate, um, and I really want to, um, talk about what Councilman Henry said about how this money is spent, and if it was the police department just wanting two million dollars like that, I would not support it. So I, I, everybody's, um, statements are good, but what Councilman Henry said made a lot of sense in terms of why this money is here and why it's being used, so I vote yes.
Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Um, I have no objection to the use that this money is being put to, but I have problems with the source. I spend half my life calling DOT, and they come out, and we need speed bumps, we want s- s- we want slow streets, we need a sign that says with no stopping, or, I mean, the world is full of tasks they do, and I must admit without complaint and very effectively, um, I just don't want them to be the source of this money, and so I'm going to vote no. Um, and, and that's the reason why. I, I just can't take away from people who have given so much to my district. Thank you.
Mr. President, there's twelve yeses and three noes.
Thank you. Uh, this is approved. This bill moves... This bill moves to the reader. Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0496, Records Management, Modernizing, Correcting, and Conforming.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Trying to fix this one.
Councilman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you're good, sir.
Okay. The City Council Equity and Structure Committee met on September 24th, 2020 to approve this bill. We did so favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent on council members' desk. I moved, oh, I'm sorry, the amendments were sent to council members electronically. I moved the committee amendments.
All those in favor approving the amendment say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Motion carries amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Okay. I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to the third reader.
Everything is right.
Thank you. Health Committee.
City Council Resolution 20-0188R, Informational Hearing, Syringe Service Expansion.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health Committee held a hearing on September 29th, 2020. I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor approving this resolution say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0608, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee heard this bill on September 29th. I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All the polls say nay. Motion approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock. You want me, Councilman? You're good.
Yes. Yes, thank you again, Mr. President. I move to Rule 12-1 to advance this bill to third reader this evening.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray. Councilwoman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello. Thumbs up means yes. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
The ayes have it, this bill moves to third reader today. Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0571, Planned Unit Development, Village of Cross Keys.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
If I object, the finding of fact will be adopted. The findings of fact are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Bill has an amendment, I move the amendment.
If I object, I mean, sorry. All those in favor approve the amendment, say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. The amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
In favor approving this bill.
Hello?
All those in favor, aye.
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 All the polls say nay.
Aye.
Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Public Safety Committee.
The, can you hear me?
You have to wait, Councilman, you have to read the bill. Mr. Young, you'll need to do this now.
City Council Bill 19-0431, Towing, Licensing, and Regulation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
The Public Safety Committee held a series of work sessions, ending with a vote on September 30th, 2020. There are amendments in your inboxes, and I move the amendments favorable.
All the say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. The motion approved, the amendments are approved. Before you make another motion, I want to ask the town.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really wanted to, I don't want to get into the details of the bill. We've got a long agenda, and we spent a lot of time on this bill in four hearings. And I, but I just really wanted to thank the committee for its time. But also, I really wanted to thank the Council President's Office for its help with this, with me on this bill. I want to thank Council, I want to thank Mayor Young for putting me on the Trespass Towing Board, which gave me the opportunity to learn about towing and made it possible for me to craft this bill. I want to give a lot of thanks to Kalen Young for all of his help with, with this bill. Thank you so much. Michael Huber as well. But most of all, I really need to thank Tony DeFranco at DLR. This man crafted a 20-page, 24-page bill with me over months and months and months of work. And, and then wrote 11 amendments and made revisions to probably nine of them. And just was tireless. And when Kalen asked him for an interlaidated version of the bill so that it was easier for us to talk about, he didn't hesitate. He had it in minutes practically. So, I just really want to thank Tony so much for his work on this. I couldn't, I couldn't be here without him. And so, I just, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity to give my thanks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes...
I move the bill favorable as amended and request a roll call vote.
All right, roll call.
President Scott. Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
No.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
No.
Councilman Burnett. Say yes. Got him, yes, for Burnett. Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
No.
Councilman Costello. Thumbs up, yes. Councilman Stokes. That's a yes. Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Very good work, yes.
President, three nos.
The ayes have it, this bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0537, Sale of Property, 3200 East Middle Street.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This hearing took place, the bill came out of committee on October 1st, 2020. The sponsor was the council president on behalf of the administration. And the committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Or amend on what?
City Council Bill 20-0587, Perkins Somerset Old Town Development District.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
This bill came out of committee on September 24th, 2020. And the council president was the sponsor on behalf of the administration. And the committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. This bill moves, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0588, Perkins Somerset Old Town Bond Issuance.
And this bill came out of committee on September 24th, 2020.
The Council Vice President? I'm sorry, it won't count unless I recognize you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on September 24th, 2020. The sponsor again was the council president on behalf of the administration. The committee approved the bill as favorable. I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
All the polls say nay. Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0589, Perkins Somerset Old Town Special Taxing District.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of, also came out of committee on September 24th, 2020. Again, the council president on behalf of the administration was the sponsor. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments were sent to council members electronically. I move the committee amendments.
All those in favor approving the amendment say aye.
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 All the... Will say nay. Amendment approved. Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor, bill say aye.
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 All the polls say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0593, Tax Sales, Properties Exempt From Sale.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on October 1st, 2020. And the sponsor was Councilwoman Danielle McCray. The committee, I would like to yield to Councilwoman McCray if she would like to say anything about this bill since this is her, really her first wonderful bill.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Vice President. I want to thank the committee. I want to thank my co-sponsors. I want to thank my staff, Kalen Young from the Council President's Office, also Tony from DLR for his help on this bill. To the many advocates who have worked on this issue and who are still working on this issue, thank you. I want to thank Delegate Ann Kaiser for the enabling legislation that allows Baltimore City to be the first local jurisdiction within Maryland to take this issue on. Thank you so much. And again, thank you for all my co-sponsors, and thank you to the committee. I really appreciate it.
Mr. President, can I just, real quick, please?
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I want to thank Councilwoman McCray. I have been talking about this with Regina Hammond over in Johnson Square. And this is a great piece of legislation. I fully support it. And I think Councilwoman McCray should be commended for bringing this out and making sure that, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we did have two work sessions with this bill as well.
Council Vice President, I'm going to interrupt you for one second before you make your motion. I'm sorry, I did not see on my screen. Councilwoman Costello had his hand raised as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank Councilwoman McCray through a number of concerns that I had with this bill to get me to a place where I'm very comfortable and supportive of this legislation. So, thank you very much for your partnership, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President, oh, sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, not to get into discussion, I just wanted to make a, you know, give my, my opinion on this. I was not on the committee and, but did take a close look at this bill. And certainly, this is an issue, a big issue citywide, the unaffordability of our property taxes. And there's programs that assist folks who are struggling to pay our high property taxes. And we should further assist those struggling with extended payment terms and other options like we've been doing on other city bills rather than essentially giving them permission not to pay property taxes. And I think the real underlying issue here is that our, our property taxes are double what our surrounding jurisdictions are, which makes it unaffordable for people to stay in their homes. And I think that's the real issue that, that we need to fix over here rather than giving people permission not to pay property taxes, which is going to further strain the general fund. And so, I just wanted to put that out there that certainly this is, this is one, one piece. This is a band-aid, but we still need to resolve the big issue. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
First of all, I just want to congratulate Councilwoman McCray, my colleague from the second, for a stunning first bill. And I would like, and thank you, and congratulations, and hard work that went behind it. This bill does not say you don't have to pay taxes. This bill says if you have found yourself owing more than maybe $750 at a crucial time of the year, you will go into tax sale. And I always remember my thought, my former, our former colleague Bobby Curran talking about the day he had to knock on a lady's door in his district and tell her it was too late. She had been in tax sale, and it was too late to get her out. It had been, her house had been sold. And that's the kind of thing that's being prevented here. Not people who don't pay their taxes, but people who may get, you don't have to be too far behind to go find yourself in tax sale and find yourself in a situation you don't know how to handle, especially if you're one of the people that has been made eligible for this protection. So, I thought that should be said because nobody said not to pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. And thank you, woman, Councilwoman McCray for leading us on this very important issue. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. And just to add, this bill is really going to help our older adults and adults that have been in their homes for many, many years and for some reason had some kind of situation or problem that put them into this tax sale situation. So, looking forward to some productive... So, uh, looking forward to some productive, um, positive things from this bill. And on that note, I move the committee amendments.
Uh, all those in favor of approving the amendment say aye?
Aye.
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 All the polls say nay. Uh, the motion, uh, is approved. The amendments are approved. Uh, and even though, uh, Councilwoman Clark has already let us know, I'm wearing the, and it's going to pass, I'm going to now move, uh, and call Council Vice President Middleton to move the bill.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
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 All the polls-
Aye.
All the polls say nay? Motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader, uh, requiring the invocation of City Council Rule twelve thousand for same-day advance and seconds at third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero six zero eight, Indigenous Peoples' Day. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Uh, this bill is approved and, uh, this bill is approved and thank you and congratulations to Councilman Bullock. I also want to congratulate the folks from Indigenous Strong who have been working on this bill, uh, uh, since two thousand and sixteen. I also want to give a shout out from the then, I believe they were fifth, sixth, and seventh graders from, uh, city neighbors, uh, charter school that brought this piece of legislation to me, uh, the first time and who were very disappointed that it didn't pass in two thousand and sixteen. And just, I want them to know, I know they will all see this and be on Instagram talking about it tonight, but to gra- congratulate them as well. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three three, City Streets Opening, Air Rights Over A Portion Of Public Right-of-Way Of The Two Hundred Block Of North Broadway. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three four, City Streets Closing, Air Rights Over A Portion Of The Public Right-of-Way Of Two Hundred, Of The Two Hundred Block Of North Broadway. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three five, Sale Of Property, Air Rights Over A Portion Of The Public Right-of-Way Of The Two Hundred Block Of North Broadway. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine five, Pesticide Control And Regulation. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Seifler, as in no, uh, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine eight, City Streets Opening, Two Three-Foot Alleyz Bounded By Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Ave- Avenue And Mulberry Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine nine, City Streets Closing, Inlows Alley And Two Three-Foot Alleyz Bounded By Tyson, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue And Mulberry Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five zero zero, Sale Of Property, Two Three-Foot Alleyz Bounded By Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue And Mulberry Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five three nine, Rezoning, Five 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 Dundalk Avenue And Block Six Nine Four, Lot One Four Two. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four one, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conditional Use Conversion Of A Single Family Dwelling Unit To Single Dwelling Units In The R Eight Zoning District Seventeen Eleven Guilford Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four three, COVID nineteen Employee Retention. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four four, COVID nineteen Laid Off Employees Right To Recall. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilman Seifler, Councilman Pinkett, as no, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero-
Mr. Mr. President, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I wasn't on that.
Oh, please also add, uh, Councilman Costello's note, uh, the bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four nine, City Property Renaming The Columbus Obulous Monument To The Police Violence And Systems Monument. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
My signal.
Please note, Councilman Costello, Councilman Reisenter, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Pinkett, as no, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five five two, Tax Credits Historical Properties. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five five seven, Baltimore City Administrative Procedure Act regulations. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five six two, Baltimore City Police Officials Residency Requirements. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five eight four, Commission On Sustainability Officers. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
That's one. City Council Bill twenty dash zero five nine zero, Zoning, Conditional Use Parking Lot. Thirteen oh one to thirteen twenty-five Edding Street, five oh five, five oh seven, five oh nine, and five eleven West Lafayette Avenue. And the alley adjacent to thirteen twenty-five Edding Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisenter, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Uh, when you hear your committee, uh, please proceed with your committee announcements. If you happen to have, or chair multiple committees, you may do both of them when I call you. Uh, we will start, uh, at the bottom, not in, where of importance, but in just alphabetical, uh, uh, reverse order. Transportation Committee, Councilman Dorsey.
Nothing, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Taxation, Finance, And Economic Development Committee, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, bear with me, council, I have seven announcements. Uh, Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Bill number one nine dash oh three six four, Thursday, October fifteenth. Uh, virtually ten AM. The next bill is, uh, oh, I'm sorry. And the bill name is, uh, Sale Of Property, Former Bed Of A Verbal With Alley Located Between Two Ten-Foot Alleyz Bonded By Boone Street, East Twenty-Second Street, Greemont Avenue, And East Twenty-Third Street. The next bill is Bill number one nine dash oh four four zero will be heard on Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM virtually. And that is the Acquisition Of Properties, Temporary Construction Easements And Permanent Easements. Also, Bill number two zero dash oh six oh five will be heard on Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at ten oh two AM. And, um, I have the, I have to move for extension of rules on this one. Uh, ten two and ten three.
With final objection, uh, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. And again, that's Bill number two oh dash oh six oh five, The Minority And Woman's Business Utilization. The next bill is Bill number two oh dash oh five eight one, Heard On Thursday, October twenty ninth, at ten AM. And that's a sale of property. A portion of South Boston Street Extending From South Haven Street. The next is Bill number two zero dash oh five eight three, Heard On Thursday, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM. And that's the sale of property verbal with portion of Boston Street. And the next bill is Bill number two zero dash oh five seven six, Heard On Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty, at ten AM. And that's the sale of property former bed of a thirteen-foot alley and a twenty-foot alley. The next one is Bill number two zero oh five seven nine, Heard On Thursday, November twelfth, twenty twenty, at ten oh one AM. And that's the sale of property former bed of a ten-foot alley. And those are all the announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, Public Safety Committee, Councilman Seifler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Public Safety Committee, uh, would like to announce a hearing on Council Bill nineteen dash zero four two eight, um, at four fifteen PM on Human Trafficking Notice Requirements, City-Owned And Occupied Buildings. And we'd like to hold a hearing on Council Bill twenty dash zero five six nine on October twentieth at four thirty, uh, for, um, Street Harassment Advisory Commission. And on that, we'd like to move to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce that hearing.
Uh, with final objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Councilman, you have to re-announce the hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I just saw it after. Um, we will hold a hearing on Council Bill twenty dash zero five six nine on October twentieth at four thirty PM on Street Harassment Advisory Commission.
Thank you, sir. Land Use Committee, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Land Use Committee will hold a hea- uh, hearings on Friday, October twenty-third at one PM on Bill twenty dash zero six two three. It's a zoning signs conversion of existing non-digital billboards. Monday, November ninth at one PM on Bill twenty dash zero six one one zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R eight zoning district with variances located eight, ten, Argorn Drive. Also have a hearing on Monday, November ninth at one ten PM on Bill twenty dash zero six one seven. That's a zoning. That's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two dwelling unit in the R eight zoning district with variances located eighteen zero one Holland Street. Also Tuesday, November tenth at ten AM on Bill twenty dash zero five seven two, It's a rezoning located thirteen zero one North Fulton Avenue. Tuesday, November tenth at ten ten AM on Bill twenty dash zero six zero nine. That's a rezoning located forty two zero seven through forty two zero nine Menlo Drive. Also Tuesday, November tenth at ten twenty AM on Bill twenty dash zero six one eight. That's a rezoning at twelve twenty through twelve twenty-two West North Avenue. And the last one Tuesday, November tenth at ten thirty AM on Bill nineteen dash zero four five three. It's a rezoning located thirty one twenty seven East Baltimore Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Councilor, Nick?
Uh, I don't have anything, Mr. President.
Uh, for neither of our- All right. Thank you. Uh, it's the Labor Committee Committee.
Um, thank you, Council President. The Labor Committee will hear Bill, um, twenty dash zero six two nine on Thursday, October fifteenth at one PM. It is the, uh, Prevailing Wage, uh, Determination Bill, uh, for the purpose of simplifying the manner by which the city determines its prevail- prevailing wage for construction contracts by indexing with prevailing hour wage established under state laws for state-financed construction work performed in the city and for providing a rate review procedure at the initial rate establishment. The second one is for Bill number twenty dash zero six two seven on Thursday, October fifteenth at one PM as well. Uh, and again, this is for the purpose of requiring the fire chief of Baltimore City Fire Department to report annually certain information to the mayor and city council of Baltimore and for requiring the report to be available on the department's website. That's it for me.
Mr. President, um, point of order, don't have to suspend rules ten two and ten three to announce a hearing within-
Yep, yep, absolutely. I was coming back to that. Councilman Sneed, you, you have a, you have to suspend rules, uh, for, for the prevailing wage, uh, bill and I think both of them actually that were introduced today. You have to suspend rules to announce hearings for those. For every, both pieces of legislation that were introduced today.
Perfect. Okay. So, I would like to spend, suspend the rules for, uh, Bill number twenty dash zero six two nine for the prevailing wage, um, determination bill for, that's going to take place at one PM on Thursday, October fifteenth, as well as for Bill number twenty dash zero six two seven for Thursday, October fifteenth at one PM for the Baltimore City Fire Department and reporting requirement bill.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. We have to do them one at a time for procedural matters. So, uh, with final objection, we will suspend, we think we will suspend, uh, the rules to allow the councilwoman to announce a hearing. Uh, the rules are suspended. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Sneed.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to announce the hearing for twenty dash zero six two nine for Thursday, October fifteenth at one PM for the prevailing wage, uh, determination bill. And I would also like to suspend the rules for, uh, Bill number twenty dash zero six two seven for Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, for the Baltimore City Fire Department reporting requirement.
With final objection, we will suspend the rules to allow the councilwoman to announce a hearing. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Sneed.
Thank you. And I would like to, to suspend the rules for the Labor Committee for Bill number twenty dash zero six two seven for Thursday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty, at one PM for the Baltimore City Fire Department reporting requirement. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, we will now move on to Judiciary Committee, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements for judiciary or budget appropriations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, we are Housing and Urban Affairs Committee, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we have a few, uh, hearings to announce today. Uh, first will be, um, let's play, let's play an oversight bill, two zero 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 eight zero, uh, which is, uh, homeless shelters. Uh, that will be on Tuesday, October twenty-seventh at two forty-five PM. And the committee will reconvene to hear your decisions in homeless shelters in Baltimore City. Uh, we'll move on to our next date, uh, which is scheduled for November tenth. On that day, you will also be having, uh, several, uh, hearings. The first of which will be at, uh, two PM. Okay, so at, uh, two PM, we will be having the hearing for, let me get set up for a City Council Bill opening closing for two o'clock, November tenth, uh, City Council Bill nineteen zero three three five. Uh, ordinance, City Streets Closing, Air Rights Over A Portion Of, uh, The Public Right-of-Way And The Portion Of One Hundred Block Of Hillen Road at the two PM, followed at two oh one PM by City Council Bill nineteen zero three six two. Uh, ordinance, City Streets Opening, A Verbal With Alley Located Between Two Ten-Foot Alleyz Bounded By Boone Street, East twenty, East Twenty-Second Street, Greemont Avenue, And East Twenty-Third Street, followed by- Again, that will be ordinance city streets closing a variable width alley located between two tenth foot alleys bound by Bull Street, East Twenty Second Street, Green Mount Avenue, and East Twenty Third Street. That will be followed at two oh three for City Council Bill nineteen zero four three nine, ordinance franchise installation of three private water pipes and a bed of the one thousand block of Cull Street, followed at two oh four PM by City Council Bill nineteen zero four five eight, ordinance franchise light pole bases in the right of way at Quad Avenue at Interstate ninety five, followed at two oh five PM by City Council Bill two zero zero five seven three, ordinance franchise electric vehicle charging stations. That will then be followed at two oh six PM by City Council Bill two zero zero five zero one, ordinance city streets closing air rights over a portion of the public right of way of Rogers Avenue. That will be followed again at two oh seven PM by City Council Bill two zero zero five two three, ordinance city streets closing a portion of West Twenty Fourth Street, followed at two oh eight PM by City Council Bill two zero zero five seven four, ordinance city streets opening a thirteen foot alley, followed by City Council Bill two zero zero five seven four, ordinance city streets opening a thirteen foot alley, followed by City Council Bill two zero zero five seven five at two oh nine PM, ordinance city streets closing a thirteen foot alley and twenty foot alley, followed by City Council Bill two zero zero five seven seven at two ten PM, ordinance city streets opening of a ten foot alley. We also have another bill at two eleven PM, City Council Bill two zero zero five seven eight, ordinance city streets closing of a ten foot alley, followed by City Council Bill two zero zero five six four at two fifteen PM, ordinance urban renewal Middle East amendment. That will then be followed by City Council Bill two zero zero six one zero at two thirty PM, ordinance repeal the rights to a town plaza transportation for the renewal area plan. Thank you, Mr. President, and it will all be noted.
Thank you. Executive Reportments Committee, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Reportments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, October the seventh, twenty twenty at ten AM to review the following nomination for civilian review board, Tyler, Sally, member of the first district. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Executive District Committee, Councilman.
No announcements, Mr. President.
And last but not least, you can come on.
No announcements. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Regular announcements. I will start off regular. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I said that I didn't have any announcements for transportation, but I did just kind of want to briefly report out on the hearing that I put into recess. The committee held a hearing of legislative oversight on the subject of traffic safety and traffic enforcement, and in particular, how BPD responds to incidents involving crashes with drivers of automobiles and vulnerable road users like people on scooters, bikes, pedestrians. And BPD presented some kind of shocking numbers. We all know that this year, drivers have basically just been driving like crazy since COVID hit. This is not unique to Baltimore. This happened across the country where basically when there were fewer cars on the road because of COVID, drivers that were still on the road were driving just really in erratic and unsafe fashion. But this has taken a toll on Baltimore City. Fatal crashes in Baltimore City are up seventy-two percent this year. This has resulted in seventeen pedestrian deaths, ten of which involve the hit and run. And I just think that this really underscores the need for us to have safer infrastructure that is going to make it safer for people to use the streets, not just for pedestrians, but for drivers, that they will be significantly safer if we design roads to modify driver behavior and to modify the consciousness of drivers. I also do want to just thank BPD for their participation in that hearing. And I was happy to learn that they have, that they are in the process of establishing a dedicated traffic enforcement unit, which the department has not had for some time, and that this is a number, it'll be a small unit, but it'd be a number of people who are working full time, forty hours a week, dedicated in this unit, who will do nothing but traffic enforcement. The city has not seen this for a long time. And one of the things that this will allow the city to do is to avail itself of some state level funding that has been available to us year after year after year and that we have not been taking advantage of. This is money that's specifically for paying police officers overtime wages to do traffic enforcement in the highest crash areas in the city. Unfortunately, due to the fact that we have been not taking advantage of this money from the state year after year after year, our allocation has shrunk dramatically. For example, Baltimore City is now being allocated one tenth of what Baltimore County is being allocated, even though we have basically the highest crash rates in the state. And so I'm hoping that BPD will utilize every single dollar that is available there so that we can get more, so that we show the state that we actually care and get more money allocated to us in subsequent years. So I just am glad to be able to report out on that. But I did put that hearing into recess, which is why I didn't have anything to report out. Otherwise, we'll be taking this issue up again at a later date. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair, ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. I neglected to announce one additional hearing that we do have scheduled again for November tenth, and that is for City Council Bill two zero zero two five zero R, Resolution Paying DPW Workers What They Deserve, and that is at two forty five PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
And Councilman, I actually, I thank you for bringing up the hearing according to folks.
Yes, I'm trying to, yes, that's for nineteen zero three two five for Hillen Road. All right, let me.
Yes, sir.
We could be a whole list. Give me for the time. Yes, okay. So City Council Bill nineteen zero three two five, that is for November tenth at two PM. That is ordinance city streets closing air rights over a portion of the public right of way of the forty one hundred block of Hillen Road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now move on to regular announcements. I will start off regular announcements by asking the Council Vice President to remind her of the status for, with now two hundred and fifty-two after this morning, of victims that we've lost to homicide in Baltimore City, although we lost COVID nineteen and overdose epidemic in Baltimore City as well. I would like to highlight again that that's two hundred and fifty-two victims of homicide and the five hundred and fifty-nine victims of nonviolent shootings in Baltimore are not just numbers. Those are people, communities, and families impacted by the disease of violence that has plagued our city for far too long. Again, as I've said before, moving forward, we have to, and we will be committed to a comprehensive approach to dealing with gun violence in our city from each and every agency. Everyone will have to know how they will play a part in reducing violence in Baltimore. We have to, from our policing standpoint, recommit ourselves to a group violence reduction strategy and focusing in on the violent repeated offenders and small groups that commit the overwhelming majority of violence in our city. We will be committed to tracking those who gun traffic and bring weapons into our city as well, something that we have not done in the past, while simultaneously building better neighborhoods throughout other agencies and investing in peoples, climates, and not just their families. What we are doing, even though as we stand today, there is less violent crime in Baltimore than there was last year, is not enough. We cannot compare ourselves to a year that was first in the history of Baltimore City. We have to compare ourselves at our best and understand that even when we were at our lowest rates in twenty eleven and twenty fourteen, there were far too many people, communities, and families being impacted by violence in Baltimore. Everyone should know that we will have a greater focus on that report. I would also like to give a shout out to all of our volunteers that came out to our ongoing trash effort in my office and Councilwoman Sneed, Delegate Smith, Delegate Robert Lewis, Senator Gordon McCray, as we were in McHenry Park this weekend, the great support that we had from the mayor's office and children founding success, the young brothers who were formed, the squeeze workers who were working with us, Alex Long and members of Safe Streets who were out there with us, all pitching in to help a neighborhood, people coming from all areas of the city, white, black, young and old, to help us, help our neighbors who are in need, to support our DPW Solid Waste workers who we know are extremely taxed right now. We will have to continue to support them as we move forward. But I would not, I would be remiss if I did not thank the Councilwoman and everyone else who came out, and I look forward to being in southwest Baltimore this upcoming Saturday for Councilman Burnett. Regular announcements. Anybody else? Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to draw your attention to a report that just recently came out by Johns Hopkins, the University of Maryland School of Law School and Open Society Institute, focused on restorative practices within our schools. Restorative practices is an alternative discipline system that focuses on restoration instead of simply being punitive. The work began in two thousand and eight. It was seeded by OSI and Karen Weber. It has continued, and according to this report, they looked at fifteen schools beginning in twenty eighteen, and what they found was that suspensions for these fifteen schools were down by forty-four percent. Their survey also showed improved culture and climate within the schools, as well as improved relationships between teachers and students. I think it's really salient as we think about ways to improve public safety and ways to value students, families, and just people within our city, that we center the work of restorative practices. Also, as we begin to implement the Healing City Act, restorative practices are certainly a part of that work. So again, I commend the school system that has embraced this work and thank OSI and all the other folks who have been pushing for it because we badly needed a change from our school to prison pipeline, and we hope to see more of this in the future. Thank you. And I will be holding a hearing at some point in late November on restorative practices. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Regular announcements. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I wanted to, first and foremost, I want to honor a wonderful lady who passed and who I hope we have a moment of silence for. And her name is Etta Brown. She is a member of Zion Baptist Church, very active in that congregation, and a long, long time homeowner and resident of Edmond Gardens Lakeside, and the grandmother of the chief of staff in my office, fourteenth district, Eric Brown. And I hope that she will be in your prayers. She was a wonderful, wonderful woman who took awfully good care of her family. I did want to talk just for a couple minutes about a bill that we have before the council now. And I was thinking about it the last time I walked through the living room, and there was a news show with fires in the west, flooding on the east coast, and red skies in between, and said to myself, how, what can we do about this climate change? What can we do when our grandchildren and children say, where were you? What did you do? And one thing we can do is ban the burn. And that is, and my thanks to my colleagues from the eleventh district, who very wonderfully chaired an all-day Friday hearing, basically, on this bill. It's pros, it's cons, very civil, very productive, very informative. But what are the next steps? Ban the burn is simply what it sounds like. No more contracts by Baltimore City Government for any incineration or incinerators. Now, we have our incinerator under contract till the end of twenty twenty-one, which is a little over a year from now. But after that, what's going to happen? There are two ways to go. Well, there's probably more, and that's kind of what I'm saying we need to think about. But one is, what's underway? Negotiations with Wheeler Brader for perhaps ten years, more. And I can't tell that to my grandchildren. I won't be here ten years from now to apologize. Basically, it is undertaken in good faith, but it is a long, long time to wait. And I would say and predict that if we go that route, ten years, at the end of those ten years, we'll be no more ready to make the change to zero waste than we are perhaps today. But we are ready. We have things in place. We have a year. We could get ready for rough going maybe, for a year or two, but move ourselves out of burning and into zero waste, recycling, reutilizing. It sounds like pie in the sky, but cities are already doing it and undertaking it, and it is working. It's not easy. So I just wanted to say, I'm asking every member of this city council to think about it, to think about it. We're going to have time to hear a little more about the plan of action that is being proposed before it becomes more than a proposal. And I thank the city solicitor for that, and we look forward to her presentation and sharing what she knows. But I would also say, public works. We know the dire prediction, and we know, but what we need to know is, if we had a Detroit here, and all of a sudden, we just plain didn't have Prescott, and it wasn't, it just happened, we would, what would we do? How would we, what would it cost? What would the steps be, we already have in the plans, to move right into zero waste? It would be good to have that report, and it would be, because we do have a lot ready. So I'm asking every council member, our president, every council member, I want, please think about this and how we can work our way through and not lose ten years, ten years, before we go into something where we're close to ready to do right now. And Detroit, apparently, they got stuck. It wasn't anybody's fault, and somehow they worked their way through it. Good model for us. So, thank you. By the way, I was just thinking, look at all the look at all the things that this council has done. I mean, we already talked about, um, Councilwoman McCoy's, um, amazing change of, of expectations and hopes for a whole pile of our people that, that have been preserved from going into tax sale. And Councilwoman, um, Shannon Sneed, it was, we voted for it, but I was there about how hard, how hard, how hard it was for the right of not only retention, but most of all, the employee's right of return. That was a heroic effort, and I was glad to be able to be there to vote yes. Um, if we can do all that, we can get to zero waste. But it's going to take all of us together thinking about how and how to organize to do it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to take a moment to commend and thank my colleague in the eleventh district, Councilman Costello, um, who is always looking for opportunities, uh, for us to partner and collaborate. And so, um, from day one, um, he invited me to partner with him on an event that we call the Seven-Eleven Cleanup because we share the George Heights community. And so, um, this Saturday, um, October the tenth, from eight A M to one P M, um, starting at George Heights C D C at twenty-one forty McCullough Street, um, we will have, um, we will assist that community in dealing with a lot of the sanitation issues that are troubling the area. Um, we expect about seventy volunteers will be practicing, uh, proper social distancing and using P P E and making certain that everyone stays safe. But, um, and I want to just take a moment to thank the George Heights C D C for their partnership, uh, volunteering untapped, the Tool Bank and others, and, uh, thank my colleague for his commitment to, um, blurring the lines between our district and really working together. So, um, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. My wife just walked into the next room, so it's a good opportunity for me to say, uh, that if she stays married to me for one more week, it will have been one year, and that I'm thankful for that. Um, and for, for the city of Baltimore for issuing me permit, uh, completely above board for me to, uh, have this wedding in my, in the street in front of my house a year ago. Um, and, uh, just, I, I couldn't be more thankful for the life that I have, uh, living my best life and, um, loving it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, celebrated and perfected your love again at the council meeting. I am sure you will be making it well past one year, Councilman, so congratulations and many more to come. Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I guess before I close out, I want to add, um, my Aunt Dolores Poole to the list of moment of silence, which passed away on September twenty-third, and the homecoming service was October second. And she was, she lived to be ninety-one years old, so, um, a moment of silence for her and, and the family. And on that note, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, at five P M. And maybe we have a moment of silence for Etta Brown, Dolores Poole, the, uh, two fifty-two families of homicide, and also the five fifty-nine non-homicide victims, and also, uh, people that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic. And I'd just like to add to that, uh, before I forget, that, uh, the National Alliance of Mental Health did a, um, study since the beginning of covid and basically said that thirty percent of people that are going through depression during this time, that's thirty percent around the country, are relapsing or overdosing. So that gives you something really to think about with this, um, opioid epidemic. And, um, just also want you to continue to wear your mask, social distancing, and wash those hands. We're still in a covid pandemic, and it's important that we continue to follow all the rules. That, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, there being a further business, this concludes the ninety-second meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Thank you, everyone. Have a great and safe evening.